This meeting to order on Monday, January 27th. It is 6:01. Let's see here. Let's have the invocation by Dr. Ron Wood, followed by the pledge by our captain. So after we stand for the invocation, if you remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Thank you for asking me to come today. And just want to say, I'm a lifelong resident of Ucaipa. I love this place and all of you guys, your hard work. Thank you so much for all of your dedication to our city. So God bless you all. Let's pray together. Lord, we are grateful people who live in a wonderful city. And we are so thankful that you have called us all together to live life together. And we pray now that as we come to do the business of the city, that your spirit would fill this place and that you would grant us kindness and grant us understanding, but grant us also wisdom, Lord. And be with the leaders of our city. Help them, Lord, and give them your strength. Give them your perseverance. Give them your vision for this place. And we pray these things in Christ's name. Amen.
Thank you, Dr. Wood, and thank you, Captain. Okay, moving on to roll call. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Bieber.
Here.
Councilmember Miller.
Here.
Councilmember Woolsey.
Here.
Mayor Thorpe.
Here.
Absent from tonight's meeting is Mayor Proton Venable.
Mr. City Manager, do we have any changes to the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, one change. I'd like to hand it to the City Attorney for that.
Mayor, we are asking the City Council to add an item to the agenda. This is an item that came to our attention after the posting of the agenda, and it requires action before the next regular meeting. That would be the addition of a closed session item under existing litigation, Paragraph 1 of Subdivision D of Section 54956.9, Anna Sossida v. Kathleen Elizabeth Sellers, Court of Appeal, Case Number E083932. This requires a two-thirds vote of the City Council data to the agenda. Thank you.
Okay, do I have a motion? We're moving this to open session or closed session? Closed session. Closed session. So moved.
This will be closed session after the open session, sir.
So moved.
Second.
Those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Moving on to our public safety updates, starting with Captain Walker.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This will be your Police Department update for the months of October, November, and December. A little bit of a catch-up. We didn't have a chance to provide our updates for these three months, so I will present them to you tonight. First, calls for service for the month of October were 3,669. November was 3,418. And December was 3,428. So still in our normal ranges for these months. No significant spikes or decreases from a typical three-month period for this time of year. And during this time, we still maintained about that five-minute average response time for our emergency calls for service in the city. Part 1 Crimes for the month of October. We had three reported robberies, 25 assaults, five burglaries, 18 thefts or larceny-related calls, and five thefts of motor vehicles for October. November, we had three reported robberies, 29 assaults, four burglaries, 30 thefts or larceny-related calls, and 13 motor vehicle thefts. And in the month of December, we had one reported sexual assault, two robberies, 27 assaults, three burglaries, 32 thefts, and 12 motor vehicle thefts for the city during those three months. Again, you know, no significant increases or decreases in these reported categories for these three months. These are pretty normal numbers as you've grown accustomed to hearing. Arrests, in October, we had 99 arrests. November, we had 78. And in December, we had 96 arrests for each, for the month. Our traffic enforcement efforts through our Traffic Enforcement Division. In October, the deputies wrote 214 sites, and there were 33 traffic accidents. November, there was 144 sites with 33 traffic accidents. And December, there was 102 sites with 29 traffic accidents. I know the December number looks low. December is typically a vacation month. So one of our traffic deputies was on vacation during that time. And then we also slightly adjusted the schedule of one of our traffic enforcement officers to target some high complaint driving areas throughout the city. So they're usually during the week. That's our highest volume of crashes is during midweek. But we were receiving a lot of complaints for some specific areas, so we adjusted a schedule to try to target some of that driving behavior. The SOP team for the month of October, they handled 37 transient calls for service. Those are, again, calls for service that go into our dispatch center and are dispatched to the deputies. They handled 21 homeless-related tips via the Ucaipa, the City of Ucaipa app. And throughout the month of October, eight of the subjects that they contacted accepted some form of assistance. The team made 36 arrests. They towed one vehicle. They conducted 16 business contacts, 29 vacant property or city park checks. And then I always like to highlight a success story because the team has a lot of these success stories. So I want to make sure the council's aware. But in October, the team contacted a new homeless subject in the area, someone that they were unfamiliar with. And they found out through this contact that this subject was, for lack of a better word, living a nomadic lifestyle and was just traveling through the area. Kind of got stranded in Ucaipa. His travels stopped him here. He really was kind of struggling to continue with his trek because he was trying to make it to Tennessee. The team was able to get him some temporary shelter, set free. Those couple of days off of the street allowed him to ultimately start his journey again and make his way to where, ultimately, where he wanted to go, which was Tennessee. And we see that quite often where oftentimes these subjects will come into the city. They're not from here. They have no ties here. But their travels just landed them here. So the team, they identify that. They try to, you know, figure out what's best for them and help them out. And in this case, they were able to allow this subject to continue on his journey. For the month of November, the team handled 21 transient calls for service. There was 21 city app submissions. Two subjects in November accepted some form of assistance. The team made nine arrests. They recovered six stolen vehicles. They made 10 business contacts and 14 vacant property checks. And then again, a success story for November was that they assisted a subject obtain legal services, which is something not normal for the team. But, you know, again, the team really strives to identify what it is they need. Diana was instrumental in this. Our code enforcement officer was able to help this person get legal services to obtain some medical documentation so that this person could start receiving their disability payments again, ultimately getting some money in their pocket and helping them get off the street. So a cool success story. We're proud of the team for these efforts and really thinking outside the box and not, you know, just because it's not something we normally do. They didn't just stop there. They really went the extra step. And that's a shout-out to, again, Diana of Code Enforcement. And for the month of December, the team handled 23 transient calls for service, 11 app submissions, three subjects accepted some form of assistance. There was 24 arrests, nine parking citations, 15 business contacts, 28 city park checks or vacant house checks. And then a success story for December was that they assisted, again, with a new transient subject in the city that they were unfamiliar with. This person was trying to make their way to Riverside, got as far as Ucaipa, and really ran out of avenues to continue their journey to get back to Riverside where their support system was. This person had made multiple attempts to contact family and friends, for someone to come pick him up just to get him the rest of the way to Riverside. There was many, many contacts with this person. And ultimately, we were able to get this person a bus pass so that they could continue their journey and get back to Riverside again where their support system was. So another good success story for the team. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Captain. Definitely, your team approach is keeping crime down. I don't want to jinx it. But the team approach and the quality of life approach is excellent. The way you're using the teams together, working with everybody, makes a difference. And you're showing also that you're showing the human compassion portion of dealing with the issues also. So thanks to you and your team.
Thank you.
But can I segue into something else that I thought was an interesting story that I saw in The Sun? That on January 19th, 2025, you guys had reported a PC-245 assault with a deadly weapon, and you had a failure to yield a 28-point, 2802, and a 597 cruelly to animals. Could you give us a brief summary on that? I believe it was kind of segued into what Councilmember Woolsey was talking about a couple of weeks ago. Tell us a little bit about that.
Yeah, absolutely, sir. So on that day, we received an anonymous call at a residence here in the city. This person believed that there was cockfighting or rooster fighting going on at the residence. In a, coincidentally, we had just spoken about that at council meeting on the Monday prior to that. So, yes, the deputies responded to that. As they got in close proximity of the house, a large amount of the participants or, I'll call them the spectators of the rooster fighting tried to flee. Luckily for our deputy, he wasn't struck by a car, but a car almost struck a deputy as they were trying to flee. That's where the assault with the deadly weapon came in. The deputy was able to get into his car. A pursuit took place. They were able to apprehend that subject. The subject had multiple roosters in his car. There was multiple occupants of the car, but there was also multiple roosters. In total, I believe there was 22 arrests out of that. Multiple roosters were seized. Animal Control came out. Our Rural Crimes Task Force came out and helped us out with that to, they deal with that on a more regular basis than we do here in the city. So they have the expertise. So we consulted with them. Diana, again, from Code Enforcement, shout-out to Diana. It was her day off. Our Public Safety Manager assisted in getting her out there to help us out, which is a big help. I believe she noted several violations, code violations at the house, and were able to shut it down. So really, it was quite an elaborate setup at the house, something that we're not used to seeing here in the city. Lieutenant and I have both witnessed that in our county jurisdiction of Muskaway. Those large operations like that, surprising to us that this has never come to our attention before because of how elaborate it was. But there was a large arena, a ring in the facility. And there was some evidence of wagering being placed and things of that nature. So it was a good job. It really taxed our resources for a little bit because there was a lot of people there and, you know, only a few of us. But the deputies did a great job. The watch commander did a great job coordinating everybody and handling that, so.
I think it's worth mentioning, consider the amount of resources the Sheriff's Farm has, and it taxed your resources. Just another example of the reason why we contract with your department. If a municipal agency encountered that, they'd be hard-pressed to deliver the services you delivered, obviously. It's a cool thought to know that the Ucaipa Police Department has a rural crime task force, has a narcotics enforcement unit, has a gang team, has a SWAT team, has an aviation unit. We're just a small, little city. But through our contract with the sheriff, we have all these specialized units that are able to come and assist us. So I think it's worth mentioning, and thank you to you and Sheriff Dykes and all you men and women of the SPSO to bring those resources to our city.
Thank you.
You have any questions?
Captain, I just want to thank you and your staff. You know, it's the things behind the scenes that a lot of folks don't know. Obviously, it was in the paper because you did a press release. But it's pulling everything together and dealing with them issues that are so important. And thank you for what you guys do and pulling everybody together. Trevor, our Public Safety Manager, and getting all the team out there. And then the Rural Task Force. Safety's number one in our town. And I really appreciate you guys responding so effectively in collaboration with other units. That's the key. Thank you for doing that.
Thank you, sir. And I'd be remiss, real quick, if I didn't, I forgot to mention our partners at CAL FIRE, too. They were a big help on that call as well. They're always a great help. We're a great team here. But I didn't want to walk away without giving a shout-out to CAL FIRE as well. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Ray? Yes, and thank you, too, for everything about that. It was kind of interesting that it all just kind of fell at the same time. So thank you.
All right, Chief. Jurors.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. So likewise, we have a three-month report here. We're a little behind. So calls for service for October, we saw 788 calls. We have some newer staff members, but a majority, jumping ahead here, majority of those are medical aids. Historically, we run a higher, actually a lower percentage of medical aids here than most towns. Most towns run about 80%. We're more than like the 70%, and then about a 10%. That's both, like a traffic collision needs paramedics, needs fire for cut and rescue, fires, et cetera. Some significant incidents, outer highway structure fire, fatal hit-and-run. And these are all significant incident emails that are sent to you. We had CICA come down and tour City Hall that we were able to participate in here at a City Hall setup. We've been getting a larger-than-average number of large animal rescues lately. So this is probably our third horse rescue in so many months. And it wasn't crazy, just you try to move that guy and it becomes a big issue. They're heavy. We did have our open house in October, so we always try to have it the week of October 9th during the Fire Prevention Week. And it was very well-tended. We typically get about 300 folks show up to our open house. Wildwood Canyon First Responder Appreciation Breakfast. We were able to participate in PD's trunk-or-treat. Elks did. I know we have something coming up next council meeting, but did recognize, along with Senator Ochoa Boggs' office, Captain Skip Miller as our firefighter of the year. He's one of our longtime, 30 years here in the city, one of our longtime captains out of Crafton Station. Read for the Record Day. We have a good rapport with the library. We do a lot with the library. And this was Red Cross, Red Ribbon, sorry, Red Ribbon, not Red Cross, Red Ribbon, eh, Red Ribbon Week. That's hard to say. Very well-tended with the kids. We were there for quite a bit. National First Responder Day, which you guys were all part of. November, we saw 794 calls, which is pretty high for us. So we've had a lot of high months this year. We won't have year-end stats till we validate that. We have to capture all of our mutual aid responses to make sure it's valid before we publish anything. Did participate in the Crafton Hills College Fair and EMS Grare Fair. We did do a Sound the Alarm event at Lakeview Mobile Home Park. And I'm sorry, I should have wrote the stats down, but I believe it was 117 smoke detectors installed through the mobile home park. So it was a lot. It was a ton. And you could see that large workforce. There are fire department and volunteers from Red Cross and some, obviously, some of our CERT folks. Law and Public Safety Academy's gone strong back at the fire station, too. So for those who don't know, this is their classroom every other Friday. They come to the station, and that's different classes, too. So it's not just one class. There's different grades. So they all come to the fire station for curriculum. And then we did have two paramedic interns graduate. So that is minimum of 25, 24 shifts. So 600 volunteer hours on our folks to precept those folks. But we turn around and give them a job application and a uniform on their last day. So absolutely, we hire those folks. Winterfest. Another significant incident we had on the Oak Fire, if you saw that. Very large, false third story created some issues for us, but we got it knocked down, obviously. December, we had a summertime call volume, for whatever reason. So we're just always, always getting busier, always getting busier. So anything over 800 calls is a busy month for us. And that was a very, very busy December. We'll drop to like 600 calls in December, so. Sorry, it's three months. There's a lot of stuff. We're busy. We say yes to everything, so. School visits, the parade. Glad to get our CAL FIRE counterparts in there as well. And then Sparkle Love Toy Drive. We do that every year. I would say easily the biggest toy drive here in Ucaipa. For the most part, we take care of Ucaipa. Our efforts do. But then we were able to help Calamaesa, some of the churches. Internally, it was over 600 kids. And then we're estimating probably 1,000 kids between all the other. We get a plethora of toys, so we help the other folks out who aren't as successful. So probably 1,000 kids through the Sparkle Love Toy Drive there, through Fire Station 2. And Brenda and Lenore are a huge part in that. They volunteer a ton of hours in December to make that happen, along with Fire Captain Travis Pay. More significant incidents. A lot of traffic collisions, so. And that's kind of all I got for you. Sorry to hodgepodge, but it's trying to condense it all into a couple minutes there.
Any questions, comments?
I do, yes. Excuse me. On the smart, smoke alarms for the Lakeview Mobile Home Park, are there plans to do that at any of the other parks? Or how did that come about?
Yep, it's something, so we've done it historically always. We just kind of rotate through the parks. COVID was obviously a big factor on that. And then fire season's been a big factor on that. So Red Cross gets pulled away. This one got rescheduled, rescheduled. The line fire, it was supposed to be September. And then the line fire, they had to go do those efforts. So unfortunately, California is very busy natural disaster-wise. So, yeah, we will, we will hope to, we typically do about two a year. That's what they have volunteer hours and supplies for.
How do you pick those parks?
So we work with Red Cross, and it was kind of on a rotation. But now that we're coming back, it's kind of, I would say, guesstimating what the greatest need is. So we, yeah, kind of what we've done before in the past and just keep that moving. So if there's anything that anybody knows that needs to be a priority, we'll definitely consider that and address it.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Chief. I wanted to share a summary that you had sent to me when I'd asked you a little bit after January 7th, where we were with everything going on. I know we had a few questions throughout the community. But, and thank you for this brief, if you don't mind if I share it with the public. Starting January 7th, Ucaipa Fire would see an up-staffing to protect Ucaipa as well as regional response, which we saw from everybody. Thank God we have a mutual aid system that works. CAL FIRE issued a statewide staffing plan, which canceled all day-offs for our firefighters through the command staff ranks through January 7th. And then through our recent rain event, folks like our chief working almost 500 hours straight, state-funded OT, not city overtime. CAL FIRE San Bernardino Unit, the administrator for State Lands in LA County. And, you know, we sent many resources to fire siege, including chief officers, bulldozers, hand crews, et cetera. With critically dry areas, as the chief has talked about in our community, extremely low humidity and excessive wind, which we saw. The question was if, it wasn't if we would see more fires. Was one and well, where? While this event didn't directly impact fire operations in the City of Ucaipa, as we talked about, it exemplified how great our statewide mutual master mutual aid system works and how well fire departments can rapidly mobilize to come to each other's aid. And you, the fire system's always been good at that. Yeah, I think public safety or fire, the police department's learned how to get better at it after your guys' example in the fire business. As Granted said, as we saw in the El Dorado Fire as well. Fire Department did see an uptick in wind-related calls, such as downlines and trees. But all incidents were quickly mitigated by staff. And you guys did a great job in response, clearly. We had a lot going on, a lot of calls about signal lights being out and wind-related issues. But once again, your staff came through. And we just appreciate your service, and thank you for the summary. I don't think everybody understands with mutual aid system and how quick and rapid that is responding to other areas that have to respond when it's called out. And we are in the middle of that system when it's called, and we can respond and ask for help from others. And because your team is so tied into that, we know we can get help when we need it. And hopefully, we won't need it too much, right, Grant? Or as you'd say.
We're always willing to help, and just like we always want the help. I mean, El Dorado, look at California Fire System, 100 fire engines in the first day. Like, that's pretty, 300 by the second day. That's amazing that we can do that. And it's even, not just California. We have interstate compacts where some of the stuff you saw on the news wasn't exactly portrayed correctly. But we have interstate compacts to, you know, get Texas, Oregon, Pennsylvania, whoever, whoever will come lend us a hand out here. So, yeah, it's phenomenal what we can do rapidly.
And we have beautiful reservoirs with water.
We do. Our hydrants work, too. So we've got a couple of those calls. Yeah, our hydrants work. I don't work for the Water District, but I can vouch that they work.
They're our water friends. And they're foresight, actually. So I appreciate, thank you, Chief, for your briefing. I really appreciate it. Or we do.
Councilmember Bieber? Thank you, Chief. Next, Code Enforcement? Trevor Benson?
Evening, Council. Mr. Mayor, I'm the last of the three musketeers up here to talk about public safety tonight. Let's get to Code Enforcement. Lot less cool pictures here than the Fire Department. They seem to like add less detail but more photos. But in October, there were 69 new code cases submitted. By the end of the month, 19 of those had been resolved. The top cases in October were overgrown vegetation, trash, debris, inoperable vehicles, public right-of-way issues, and graffiti. In November, there were 61 new code cases that were submitted. 12 of those were resolved by the end of the month. And kind of similar as far as the top cases, garbage, rubbish, and combustibles. November continuing, there were several mobile home park, I guess, multi-factor mobile home park inspections or comprehensive inspections. And with those, they noted things like there were no stairs at some of the doors. And there were combustibles stored under some of the awnings, et cetera. Overgrown vegetation, maintenance of the public right-of-way, and leaking plumbing fixtures in those comprehensive mobile home park inspections. In December, there were staggering 229 new Code Enforcement cases submitted. 113 of those 229 were resolved by the end of the month. The top cases are garbage, rubbish, combustibles stored under some of the awnings at the mobile home parks. No stairs, landings, or handrails at some of the comprehensive mobile home park inspections. As well as continuing with the comprehensive mobile home park inspections, rubbish, vegetation, awning, and carport supports that are not up to code as well as unpermitted construction. As far as inspection activity, inspection activity and Code Enforcement generation of cases are different. The new Code Enforcement cases are things that are reported to us or things that are observed by the Code Enforcement officers while they're on patrol. Inspection activity is cases that are previous and could be longstanding for many years. And the Code Enforcement officers are following up on every single one of those cases every 14 days. So in October, there were 252 inspections by our Code Enforcement officers, and 326 cases closed out. That resulted in $19,936 in received citation fines. Individual unit inspections were completed for mobile home parks. There were three poultry inspections, and no violations observed at those poultry ranch inspections. In November, there were 210 inspections conducted by the Code Enforcement officers. 113 cases were closed out. That resulted in $3,300 in received citation fees. As far as the mobile home parks, they conducted a comprehensive inspection, mobile home park inspection, mobile home park inspection at Knollwood Mobile Home Park on November 4th and November 5th. And 17 new cases were opened as a result of that comprehensive inspection. There was one poultry ranch inspection and no violations were observed. The notable element for November is this is the month where the code enforcement department was changed from development services to under the umbrella of public safety. As you can see throughout these slides, there are some before and afters as to some of the inspections the officers conducted. And then lastly, in December, 384 inspections conducted by our code enforcement officers, 160 cases closed out. That resulted in $2,790 in received citation fees. There were five comprehensive mobile home park inspections. One at the Bel Air Carriage Trade Manor Hitching Post, the Patrician and Valley Breeze. There was one poultry ranch inspection that resulted in no violations observed. And the notable element for December is the winter closure. That's the end of my report and I'm here for any questions you might have.
Will the mobile home park inspections continue or have you been through them all?
No, they, well, yes, they will continue. No, we haven't been through them all.
Okay.
Yes, they'll continue, you know, multiple times throughout the year. In fact, I'm currently kind of negotiating to ramp up our mobile home park inspections. So I hope to bring that to you in the next couple of months.
Thank you.
Trevor, thanks for what you're doing with code enforcement. You know, it can be unappreciated what the role is because it can be compliance or enforcement. And I'm sure we try with compliance first. We try to get people to comply with it. But once you start with administrative fines, that adds a little more sanctions to things. And that's where it can get a little bit difficult.
Sure.
When they see the code enforcement officer show up, quite frankly. In the end, we're just trying to get things in compliance and clean things up, right? But it can be a tough job for a code enforcement officer out there, right? And on occasion, that probably can be something where we probably receive more complaints than we do in other areas. Would you agree with me on that?
Oh, absolutely. I mean, just like in law enforcement, if you're not getting complaints, you're probably not doing your job right. I honestly think that code enforcement's a really difficult job. You know, one, they're overworked. You know, there's just too much work for three code enforcement officers. They're doing what they can. And, you know, secondly, unlike many other cities, we police or, you know, conduct, you know, the inspections of our mobile home parks here in town. Many other cities, you know, pass that off to the state. We want to retain control of that so that it kind of doesn't get away from us. So absolutely, I think that, you know, our code enforcement officers do a great job with the tools that they have.
I just wanted to thank your code enforcement officers. I know that that can be tough sometimes, especially when you're going up to the door and knocking on it for the 14th time and reminding them. But it is about compliance and trying to get it fixed or squared away. But at times you have to use administrative fines and what that scale is. And at times that finally gets it resolved. Would you agree?
Absolutely, you know, we're continuing with the, you know, direction that you have given us, as well as the city manager has given us, which is, you know, the customer service, community-based policing type of enforcement. Days ago, you know, long ago, I think it was a little bit different. The intent now is to gain compliance and hopefully we don't have to go towards fines. And hopefully we won't have to go towards citations.
Are notices sent out before they go into a mobile home park?
I'm not sure, to be honest with you. I could find out and get back to you.
Okay, that'd be fine. Thanks.
I'll get back to you, ma'am.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment?
Yes, Mayor, we do. We're going to start off with Chris Recksted, followed by Richard Frost.
Okay, and just a reminder that each individual speaking has a three-minute limit and we're not allowed to engage. All right.
Okay. Mayor Thorpe, members of the council and citizens of Yucipa. My name is Chris Recksted. I'm the principal of Valley Elementary, one of your outstanding schools here in town. We are a leader-in-me school, which is based on the book Seven Habits of Highly Effective People by Dr. Stephen Covey. We teach these habits in kid version from his son's book, The Leader in Me. These habits are everywhere on our campus and the students know how to implement them into their daily lives. From goal-setting and monitoring those goals to taking charge of their academics and behavior, our students follow these habits well. Leadership Day is our chance to show the community how this all works. That day, you will be immersed in our leader-in-me ways from the Friday flag synergy time to classroom tours, all led by students. Please come and see what the future holds for Yucipa. Save the date, March 7th, from 7:00 to 10:00 a.m. I have for you, I will leave them with your clerk, some invitations and there's plenty. So pass them around everywhere you go. Thank you.
Richard Frost, followed by Richard Hernandez.
Madam City Clerk? If we just pause for one second. Mr. Recksted? It's the first time I've seen you since your promotion. Congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
For those of, very few in the room know, I met Mr. Recksted when I was nine years old, when he arrived at Valley Elementary as a fourth grade teacher. I was not fortunate enough to have him as my teacher that year. My brother was lucky enough to get him the following year. And he was by far the coolest teacher on campus, doing the most engaged field trips. I was so mad at my little brother because he got to do all the fun stuff. When I was in Mr. Heron's class and the boring stuff. Sir, truly, I would just wanted to say congratulations on your promotion. It's very well deserved, the things you're doing at that school. I know Ms. Miller was doing the same thing as well. Under her leadership, you have truly engaged that leadership role early on. And we're seeing some of our youngsters emerge as leaders. Had an opportunity to sit down and interview some of them for their, for their events there. And I was taken aback that these young, these are nine and 10-year-olds who are articulate and they're engaged and they shake your hand like they're an adult. And they confront your questions head-on and it was absolutely incredible. And I think all of your staff there at Valley Elementary are doing a phenomenal job. And clearly the leadership credit is to you and your staff. So I'm looking forward to this event, like everything you put on over there. Yucipa's in good hands with the future of our city if the young men and women are following your leadership. So thank you, sir.
Thank you very much, Mr. Beaver.
Richard Frost, followed by Richard Hernandez.
Richard Frost, 13645 Fifth Street, Yucipa. I've ridden the omnitrans buses on and off for a number of years and they're fairly safe. But on this last New Year's Eve, when I got off, the door closed on me. You know, not that hard, but it closed on me. And this was the third time in 12 years this happened. I mean, that's a long period, but the need to figure out, you know, how they can, so, I guess maybe have, whether they should be automatic or controlled by the driver, I don't know. But they, sometimes things happen, people get caught in the doors. And I've heard other people have the same problem, so that, and that's, I guess that's run by the county, but still it happened over here at the Transit Center and that, so it was.
Thank you.
Richard Hernandez, followed by Dr. Evan Hook.
Good evening and thank you for letting me speak here tonight. Congratulations on your new positions here with City Council. I like to bring the attention to everyone. Unfortunately, we're not all wealthy and sometimes we've overlooked our future as far as social security is concerned. But these people that have these violations, say with the chickens, having rooster fights or whatever it is, well, sometimes it comes under alternatives. I'm either going to have a little extra money to pay the mortgage or whatever the reason may be. But I hope you take into consideration, sometimes it's out of desperation. I don't know what the circumstances are, but I've known people in that type of position. As for the code enforcement, you should try and find a way of easing the load, lessening the load for these people. I can recall when I was employed at one time. I had 25 accounts. You divide that by eight, eight hours, you're getting about 15 minutes per account, which is absolutely nothing. You can't say the proper hello, the proper goodbye or introduce any of the new products to the customer because you're on the go and trying to push everything and trying to complete your daily task. The other thing is, I'm glad you had your, what is it, invocation, invocation prayer before the meeting. And I honestly hope that your intentions are to help the people in the community, that you're actually going to represent them and listen to their concerns other than, I'm here listening, but actually I'm not, that type of a thing. I'm fairly new to Yucipa. I've lived here probably five or six months now. I don't really know all the procedures or what the concepts are as far as everyone is concerned. But I think that you should be listening to the residents with all their concerns. Some of the past issues that I've seen, on my part, it seems no good. But search your conscience. You are representing the residents of Yucipa. And I'd like to thank the sheriffs, the police officers, the fire department for all the service that they provide at this city. Thank you very much and have a good night.
Lastly, we have Dr. Evan from Redlands Community Hospital.
Good evening. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. My name is Dr. Evan Howe. I'm the medical director in the emergency department at Redlands Community Hospital. Here to highlight our hospital's naloxone or Narcan distribution project. This is an essential initiative designed to address and mitigate the ongoing opioid crisis affecting our community. So Narcan Distribution Project, which is launched by the Department of Healthcare Services, was created to combat the rising tide of opioid-related overdose deaths across California. The state-funded program provides free Narcan nasal spray financed by California's General Fund and settlement agreements with opioid manufacturers and distributors. Its objective is straightforward, to prevent avoidable deaths caused by opioid overdoses, particularly those involving fentanyl, which is a driving force behind the epidemic. At Redlands Community Hospital, we've taken steps to expand access to life-saving resources by installing three self-service kiosks. Two of these kiosks are on the main campus, one outside the emergency department and another near the clinics across the street. A third kiosk is located here in the, at the Yucipa Clinic on Fourth Street. These kiosks offer individuals a way to anonymously access Narcan nasal spray and fentanyl test strips. Each Narcan package includes clear, user-friendly instructions, ensuring individuals can confidently administer this life-saving medication. Importantly, no patient registration is required, ensuring privacy for users. The opioid crisis fueled by the illicit rise of fentanyl represents a significant public health challenge. Fentanyl, which is a synthetic opioid, is 50 times more potent than heroin and about 100 times more potent than morphine. It's a powerful medication when used appropriately for pain management. Unfortunately, its illicit recreational uses become prevalent with often devastating outcomes, as I'm sure you're already aware. Symptoms of opioid overdose include confusion, dizziness, weakness, slow breathing, pinpoint pupils, bluish lips and unconsciousness. Tragically, if not treated quickly, overdoses often result in death. However, Narcan can reverse these effects when administered in time, underscoring its critical role in saving lives. In California, opioid-related fatalities rose by over 120% between 2019 and 2021. And last year at Redlands Community Hospital, we treated over 400 cases of overdoses. Current prescription laws for Narcan pose significant barriers to timely access. And by offering free Narcan through our kiosks, we're trying to break down these barriers and provide a vital resource to those at risk as well as their families. Since December of 2024, we have stocked our three kiosks with 408 boxes of Narcan, of which 352 have already been taken by the community. Additionally, we've placed 200 fentanyl test strips and 145 have been utilized. We invite collaboration between the hospital, the city and community stakeholders to further promote and raise awareness of this life-saving program. Together, we can take meaningful steps to combat the opioid crisis and safeguard the well-being of our residents. Thank you for your time and attention to this matter.
Thank you.
I have no further cards.
All right, thank you. At this time, this would be the time, if there's any conflict of interest, for council members to declare that at this time. Seeing none, okay. Moving on to the consent agenda, items one through five. Does anybody wish to pull any items?
I'd like to pull number five for discussion.
Number five for discussion, okay. Anybody else? Do I have a motion to accept one through four?
So moved.
I have a first.
Second.
And a second, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Yeah, moving on to item number five.
Good evening, Council and Mayor. Item number five is the Pumpkin Factory LLC's Special Event Permit Application to hold a series of concerts on their property located off of Live Oak. The concerts will take place on several dates listed on their application. February 22nd, March 22nd, April 11th and 12th, May 24th, June 15th, July 19th and August 30th through 31st. The applicant states that they'll have 2,000 spectators. They'll be selling tickets to the concert and will be offering food and beer for sale. After the permit is presented to council, it will go to the various departments for review and approval. This concludes my report and I can answer any questions that you may have at this time.
Have we forecasted our music and arts festival and all of our community festivals? And do any of them interfere with this private businesses efforts to be successful?
Yes, we do have our events for 2025. The only conflicting date is on April 19th. It's our extravaganza day. And so I think that there's enough people in the community and surrounding communities that this will not conflict.
It's a different type of event, right?
Yes.
Not answered so much on our end?
Yes. That is correct.
Anything else? Any other comments or questions?
I'll move the item for approval.
We've got a first?
I'll second.
First and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right.
Thank you, ma'am.
Moving on to item number six.
Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council. Item six is the Classification and Compensation Study. These studies are conducted to analyze and evaluate job classifications and corresponding pay levels to ensure that positions are paid fairly compared to the external market. The aim is to attract and retain qualified employees while maintaining internal equity within the city. Yucipa's most recent classification and compensation study was completed in 2010. Typically, these are recommended to be performed every three to five years. Tonight's item, the deliverable, is a result of the City Council goal from 2023. These things take some time to complete. But, but we're at least 13 years now, that is 2025, 15 years is the gap between class and comp studies. And again, the recommendation is every three to five years, so we're definitely due for it. The item is a receive and file, meaning that no city council action is being requested at this time. These studies are thorough, they take a lot of time and they're expensive. It's important, as we're making future decisions, to understand the usefulness of the data that's involved and the limitations of the data that are involved. So they take time to soak in, understand and work through to make good decisions moving forward. Again, tonight is a receive and file. There is, important to note, there is an updated attachment. The original attachment had a couple of pages that, in the narratives, that needed an update. So on our website, there is a updated link to the Classification and Compensation Study. It's included in your packet. For the members of the public, it is available on our website. There's also a copy available in the back of the room. Also, the item tonight references an attachment under separate cover. That is, in fact, the study that's included in the packet. It's not under separate cover, it's included in the packet. Courtney McCray, our Human Resources Manager, managed the Classification and Compensation Project. I'm going to turn it over to her so that she can. I'm going to turn it over to her so that she can discuss the procurement and introduce the vendor, Evergreen Solutions.
Good evening, mayor and city council. So as Phil mentioned, this item before you is related to city council's 2023 goal number ten, which was included direction to conduct a classification and compensation study. So this item was included in the fiscal year 2324 budget. After we got that approval, we went out to a competitive procurement and we contracted with Evergreen Solutions in November of 2023. Over the course of several months, Evergreen was both onsite and worked remotely to gather information, conduct interviews with city employees to get a better understanding of the function of each of the positions. The, the data that they collected from our employees was then compared to similar organizations within neighboring communities. So the study process itself requires management to provide certain directives and objectives throughout the process. One directive given to Evergreen was to focus solely on our regular full-time employees, so we didn't have any of the part-time employees included in this since they're not part of any labor negotiations or salary schedules that are adopted by council. The city manager position is also excluded because that's typically a contracted position, not just here, but at other agencies as well. So that one's a little bit difficult to try and find similar salary ranges like you can with all the rest of our positions. One of the other key directives that the city targeted or that the city provided was the, the placement that we wanted Evergreen to focus on with this schedule. So for the purposes of this study, the city directed Evergreen to place the city of Ucaipa in the seventy-fifth percentile. So this means that the compensation structure either meets or exceeds seventy-five percent of the market results that were gathered. So the table comparing the market results is on page one thirty-eight of the packet. That's the page that's tabbed on each of your handouts up there for you city council members. And the summary narratives following the two pages after that have also been updated to match these numbers that have been updated in the packet. So now that we have the new council seated, we decided to wait until this evening to provide this information to you because you will likely be the ones using this information to make decisions going forward. So at this time, like Phil mentioned, the only action we're requesting is receive and file, and then future discussions can be had with this data. So in order to ensure that the data gathered is presented as accurately as possible and directly from the source, we have Evergreen Solutions here with us this evening. We have project manager Mark Holcomb here to present his findings.
Thank you all very much. I appreciate you having me today. I believe we have a PowerPoint that will be coming up in a moment. Do I just need to click it? Okay. Excuse me then, I didn't realize I was on the next slide, so thank you. So for the PowerPoint today, again, I do want to go over the study process and really give you an overview of what we did over the course of the engagement. So the first two bullets, the study goals and the project phases, is a little bit of recap, talking about why were we hired, why were we brought in, what was our objective at the beginning of the study, and then what were the phases that we took to actually get today to the reporting piece of the study. The current system findings reflects the internal equity that was just mentioned a moment ago. So when we looked at your system before we compared to the market, what did we see as it relates to HR best practices or the other work that we've done across the country? How does your system internally compare? And then the next bullet on there is the market results. Of course, the external analysis is a key and critical part of any compensation study, finding out how do you compare to your peer organizations, the, the competition in the market. If you have a talented employee, if you're looking to recruit a talented employee, how does compensation compare here versus in your market? And then the last two, the recommendations and implementation options. We, we modeled a number of different options for city staff to, to review and to understand the different choices and really pass forward that they have. So we'll share one of the typical sort of standard approaches tonight as an example. But again, just as noted, it's a receive and file. If you all had any other direction, any other questions, any other, you know, objectives you'd like to take a look at, that is available as well. So for the study goals for a classification and compensation study, the two main things that we focus at on a high level are the internal equity of your system and the external equity of your system. So when we use those two terms, internal equity refers to how your positions relate to one another within the city. So if you have two different people operating in the same job, they're performing similar duties, they're working at a similar level, but they're in two different departments, internal equity would dictate that they should have similar compensation available to them. They should have a similar job title, and they should be classified in your system in a similar way. Likewise, if you have two positions that are not operating at the similar level, maybe you have one position that has additional leadership responsibilities or it's significantly more complex of a position or with more decision-making autonomy, you would expect that position to have a higher level of compensation and potentially a higher classification title assigned to that. And so that equity that we look at, the internal side of things, relates not just comparing, you know, like positions, but also positions that are not alike, making sure that they're aligned in a logical way. With external equity, it refers to comparing your positions to those positions in external market peers. And so again, if you have a position here, operating in the exact same way it would operate in another local government, how does your compensation stack up to that? Is it competitive? Is it, you know, are you paying more than they would pay somewhere else? Are you paying less? Or again, is it about the same? So all of our recommendations at the end of this and in the report as well do factor in both of those items. So it's not as simple as taking simply the market average and saying, "Hey, the market average is, you know, fifty-five thousand dollars, so we should pay fifty-five thousand dollars." We do look at the internal system as well to ensure we're not going to create any concerns there. So there are four phases that we go through in the study in general. Phase one is all about data collection. And so that data collection included both what we collected from city staff, from HR, but it also included an outreach portion where we met with employees. And we actually came and sat with employees here. We hosted focus groups to hear employee concerns, to hear their thoughts, to hear what they wanted to share as it related to compensation and classification concerns. And then we also sent out a job survey that employees had the opportunity to provide information on their own jobs and let us know basically if there should be any updates made to their job descriptions to bring them to a more accurate place. Phase two is the internal analysis. So that's where we actually study all of the information that we gathered in phase one. It's where we get to know your organization a little bit better and where we really can tailor the study to, to what your city needs, again, as opposed to a more generic process. So we review your job descriptions, we review those job surveys that employees submitted, we look at your pay and compensation systems and policies. And again, we provide an analysis based on the internal factors that we see. Phase three is the external analysis, so going out to the market and again, making the comparisons to peers. I think that's pretty straightforward, so I won't spend a lot of time on it. But again, it's definitely a key, critical part of the process. And then phase four is the solution recommendations or really implementation phase here. And so it includes the options that we provided to the organization. So looking at things like, you know, what are the different cost options? What do we recommend with your pay grades? And what do we recommend? How do we recommend adjusting employees to get them into the new pay grades as well? It includes things like the written report that you all have access to as well as this presentation here as well. So with your current system findings, we definitely found some strengths in, in your current system, although it hasn't been a long time since it's been updated. You know, you, you all have done a good job in general maintaining that system equitably. And so we did see, again, a consistent progression across the, the pay ranges. Essentially, that means every time you move up a grade, there's a consistent, you know, gap between one grade to the next. And there's a consistent length between the minimum and the maximum of each grade, which is a good thing you like to see. We also saw the majority of employees making approximately what their projected salary would be. So when we look at their projected salary, that does not factor in market competitiveness, but it just looks at if we assume their pay range is the correct range for their position, do we see newer employees towards the minimum of the pay range? Do we see employees who have been here for a long time towards the maximum of the pay range? We would like to say that that, you know, should take place everywhere, but in our, you know, studies that we've conducted across the country, that is not always the case. So definitely a strength that we saw that, that you all had administered that plan successfully thus far. With the weaknesses, there are a significant number of unused grades that can hint towards a, a pay plan that essentially has a little bit more, a little bit more going on than you might need. And so you could look to update the pay plan somewhat or really condense it slightly so you don't have quite as much there. Again, not a major issue or concern. Some of your, your peers have similar plans and similar structures, but something we wanted to point out. With the market study, so looking at the external market, you'll see over on the right-hand side, twenty-seven different organizations that did respond and provide information related to the study that we conducted here. We did adjust those organizations' responses for cost of living. And so what that essentially means is we look at, you know, your local area, your region, based on the county, and we adjust any responses that come from outside the county for cost of living. And so again, while it's not a major adjustment for many of those organizations, if you do have certainly an organization in LA County potentially, or again, really anybody outside the immediate area, we don't want to let an outlier skew the data. We don't want to, you know, let a higher level of compensation impact things just because, you know, they happen to be in a higher cost of living area. And likewise, you don't want to have a lower cost of living peer drag the data down either. So we did look at that adjustment as well. We, we looked at forty-eight different positions, and the average response count was about fourteen matches per position. So I'll indicate that as a very robust response. We were very pleased and felt very confident in the data that we received. We don't want to have twenty-seven matches, even though we have twenty-seven peers, you know, for every position, because that essentially means we're not being selective enough in comparing positions that are performing the exact same job duties. So we did study every position that we matched for the job description, both here at your city as well as the job surveys that employees provide here at the city. We compared those to job descriptions of your peer organizations to make sure that we were only matching positions that had at least a seventy-five percent overlap in duties. So we want to compare as apples to apples as possible. If a, a peer organization didn't have a job that fit that threshold, we simply didn't provide a match. And again, that's how we got to our average of fourteen matches per position. So looking at the market results, as indicated, at the seventy-fifth percentile of the market, we did see you fell slightly behind that benchmark. Again, I want to emphasize, you know, it is a small difference, one percent at the minimum up to about four percent at the maximum. So it does indicate you're competing at approximately that level, although again, with a small gap there. That does put you above average, but again, of those twenty-seven different peers, if you lined them up from bottom to top, you'd be above about three-quarters of them and below that top quarter there. These are the average results, so I want to indicate not every single position came out the exact same way. Some of your positions fared a little bit worse, and some of your positions fared a little bit better when you compare that to the market. And so again, your average position is just under that seventy-fifth percentile, but individual results will vary for both employees as well as each individual position. So the key recommendations, and again, these are different options that we have provided to city staff, and we'll share some, you know, with you today and in that final report as well. But the recommendations that we, you know, had really focused on three distinct levels is number one, looking at that pay structure and bringing that to a market-competitive position. So really adjusting those pay ranges to align with the seventy-fifth percentile of the market. Part of that is item number two, which is adjusting the pay grades for those positions that fell a little bit lower or potentially above that market, is really looking at, are they in the correct pay grade? Should they be adjusted or tweaked in order to align more appropriately with that seventy-fifth percentile of the market? And that third bullet is providing options for employee adjustment into the plan. So there's a number of different ways you can actually put employees into a new pay grade. We'll go over two of the more basic ways here, one of which is on, on the, the less expensive side. It's essentially saying, "We want to get into the, the new system. We want to get these new pay grades in place, but we're not going to expend quite as much on employees this year." Again, that, that could save money for a cost-of-living adjustment or for adjustments in the future. But that's the bring-to-minimum option we'll cover first. And then we do have another option that actually looks at compression and adjusting salaries based on time and position as well as time with the city overall. So with those cost options here, we do have the two different options up there. As I mentioned, bring-to-minimum, the only adjustment that option looks to provide is to say, "Is an employee currently below the pay range?" Or is the, the employee currently within the, the current pay range that we're recommending for them? If they are below the pay range, they get moved up to that pay grade minimum. It's that would provide an adjustment for them. If they're within the range, they don't need to move at all unless it's to round them, you know, just to a step right next to them. So again, maybe a small adjustment just to put them on a pay step, but again, no further adjustment than that. That is the less expensive option. So again, coming in at about a hundred and ten thousand dollars. That is a recurring salary expense, so it is something that, again, would go into the payroll going forward. On the second option is the hybrid parity approach. And the hybrid parity approach is, again, a little bit different because it actually looks at addressing any concerns that we see for compression within the pay ranges. And so the hybrid approach works by first looking at the time an employee has spent within their position, and then it gives partial credit for any time that an employee has spent at the city in a different position. And so a common example of that is if an employee's been at the city for ten, fifteen, twenty years, they've been working their way up, and then they get a promotion. If you only look at time and position, you risk actually punishing that employee and not giving them any credit for their time spent. However, we don't want to give full credit for position, for time that they spent at a lower-level position in the organization. For example, if someone promotes to a manager role, yes, it's important that they spent time, and yes, that, that experience that they've brought to the city in a previous role is important, but we do credit it at a partial fifty percent rate. Because again, they're still learning a new job, they're, they're stepping into a new role. And so again, we don't view it as quite as relevant as experience in that current classification would be. So this option is, again, a little bit more expensive, about two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. Those are total reoccurring salary dollars. But essentially, that would give you not only the updated pay ranges that put you at the seventy-fifth percentile of market, it would also give compression adjustments to those employees who need them. So again, that's an overview of, of the study process as a whole, the, you know, some of the example implementation options that we had. And I'd be more than happy to address any questions or feel any comments.
Thank you, Mark. Council, any comments or questions?
Did your study analyze, evaluate any compaction issues between supervisors and their subordinates?
It, it did. That's part of what I referenced when I talked about the internal equity of the, the grade assignments. And so one of the things that we looked at is when making those pay grade assignments, if, if we find that a supervisor and employee are too close together, we could actually space those out. Additionally, if you see, you know, versus the market, if an employee showed that they were below market, we needed to move that pay grade up, we would evaluate their placement versus their supervisor to ensure that making an adjustment to the employee would not create compression or compaction between the two roles.
And forgive me if I overlooked this, but in the, in the report, where, where would the specific? I mean, I, I use the term compaction, but you said internal equity. Did we find that we have an issue with compaction, internal equity, relative to supervisors who are burdened with supervision, leadership, conducting evaluations, holding people accountable, are making close to what their direct reports are making?
It was not a significant issue. There is a chart in, I believe it's in chapter three, towards the end of the, the chapter. And there is a chart that says, I believe, employee versus supervisor compression. And again, I do believe from reviewing the report this morning, I believe there was not a significant issue that was found on that.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Councilmember Miller?
Yeah, I mean, some of the, some of your report, if you summarize, it looks like our employees are pretty happy. We're not too much out of market. They like working here because it's local. They stay a long time, so chance for advancement can be tough sometimes. We don't have a lot of positions, we contract out some services. We're not too compacted with some of the positions, except on your chart, there's one that's at ninety-five percent. You can probably explain that here in a second.
Sure.
I did get a brief on that. So overall, and then there was an FSLA adjustment that needed to be made. I assume city manager, we took care of that. That was one of the first recommendations, actually. So everybody gets realigned. But pretty much, as I read this, am I pretty close to about how, how it looked to you?
You are, and certainly, again, coming here and making this presentation, I can say, you know, your city staff has, has done a good job overall, you know, maintaining the system, particularly when we look at how long it's been since your last overall review. So certainly, I don't come here and, and say it's doom and gloom or there's, you know, there's, there's too much that needs to be done. But similar to, you know, an oil change for your car, is, is you do want to take a look, you do want to make sure that you address those issues before they, you know, become larger issues down the road. But again, I think overall, a pretty good, I think your staff has done a good job with maintaining the system.
And if I was a bargaining unit representative, I'd be going through this, no doubt about that. But that's good. We probably got to go out for another survey anyways on some of the positions.
Sure.
But overall, they were pretty much recommendations you would see from a service. And then it's employee-driven because the JATs were interviews, basically, with the employees, right? They were, it sounded like they were forthright. And in trying to get everybody aligned as part of the program, I assure the city manager is going to work on, get people in the right positions that are aligned with the job they're doing rather than working out of class or, or something like that, right?
Correct, absolutely. And the employee participation is definitely a key factor in, in our processes. We don't want to make, particularly if you, if it's been fifteen years since your last study, if a job description hasn't been updated in fifteen years, we don't want to make an assessment on that. So we want to give the employees the opportunity to provide more current and accurate information. So that's, that's what we did at the beginning of the process, absolutely.
Councilwoman Woolsey? No? All right, thank you.
Thank you all very much. Take care.
This is a receive and file, do we need a vote on this?
Yes, please, just a vote to receive and file the report.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to receive and file only.
I'll second.
Got a first and a second, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? All right. Moving on to item number seven, Madam Clerk?
Thank you, mayor. Item seven for your consideration tonight is the designation of a delegate and alternate for the Southern California Association of Governments, 2025 Regional Regional Conference and General Assembly. This year's conference will be held on May first and second at the JW Marriott in Palm Desert. SCAG requests that each member city appoint a delegate and alternate to vote at this assembly. During the general assembly, delegates will have the opportunity to consider and take action on proposed resolutions and/or SCAG bylaw revisions that have been submitted and reviewed in accordance with SCAG policies. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions for the council.
Counsel, have any questions?
Mr. Mayor, maybe just one quick point of clarification. So this is not an appointment to the SCAG board. This is, every year at the annual conference, they have what's called a general assembly. And at the very end of the conference, everybody gets to vote on, on policy issues. And so the unfortunate individual who is the delegate from the city has to stay to the very end of the last day of the conference to, to, to vote.
So is it just one or is it two? It's two, right?
It's two.
Right, okay. I have prior obligations on the first and the second bolt. I will not be able to attend. Do anybody on the council have a desire to attend those days?
I can go.
Okay.
It's my wife's birthday weekend. She'd kill me.
I can go, John. No problem.
Okay. So.
Mayor.
That's fine. So I'll make a motion that Councilman Miller and Councilwoman Woolsey be the representatives for this year. Do I have a second?
Second.
You have a first and a second.
Mayor, if I could just, I'm sorry, get clarification on who is the delegate and who is the alternate?
Woolsey spoke up first.
Yep.
Okay, that's fine. Actually, I would like to comment on that too, because I did apply for the SCAG committee. And they told me that they had so many, you know, this year that unfortunately they couldn't put me on, but that hopefully in two years, maybe they could get me on. So this works in with the transit board anyway. So that's fine.
Okay, so we have a first and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Moving on to item number seven, Mr. City Manager.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this is our annual goal setting. The purpose of the city council's annual goal setting is to clearly identify and adopt a list of agreed-upon priorities for the year. Once adopted, these goals will help guide the council and staff to ensure that time and other resources are allocated in a manner consistent with the council's shared objectives for the city. A matrix of the city council's prior year goals will be presented tonight to review and track our progress. This process does not result in a list of comprehensive projects. That level of detail will be contained in the draft budget for fiscal year two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six, which you will first see in May, but rather a set of broad goals. I think it's important to, to highlight the difference between goals and objectives. Setting goals for the organization is a responsibility of the city council, while achieving those goals through the establishment and execution of specific and measurable objectives is more appropriately the role of the city manager and staff. Based on input from council members and staff, this presentation will identify several proposed goals for consideration. Staff recommends that the city council tonight discuss those goals along with any others that may be important to you and adopt a list of goals for the two thousand twenty-five calendar year. But we're going to start, and most of this presentation will be a recap of our progress on the goals for last year. I apologize in advance, this presentation will be a bit lengthy. I think it is important to pause and take some time once a year to go through the progress that the city has made over the previous year. This is pretty comprehensive, but it isn't everything. It would be impossible in one sitting to go through literally everything. Every department has done and accomplished over the period of a year, but these are the major highlights. And I think you'll be impressed at the, the volume and the quality of, of work that's been accomplished towards the goals that were, were set by the city council and some things in addition to those goals as well. So let's jump right in. We'll go down goal, one goal at a time. So we will start with goal number one, which was establish and implement a plan to correct the structural budget deficit. Entering fiscal year two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five, the city faced a projected fifteen million dollar budget deficit based on preliminary budgetary input from all city departments. Realizing how unfeasible this deficit was, city administration implemented short-term cost-saving actions such as freezing vacant positions, deferring the replacement of fire apparatus, postponing maintenance projects, and delaying the creation of badly needed new positions. These steps reduced the projected deficit from fifteen million dollars to seven-point-three million dollars. With this groundwork laid, the city turned its attention to implementing a plan to correct the deficit. City staff and the governmental affairs and finance departments launched a rigorous analysis of revenue generation options and potential spending cuts to chart a path towards financial stability. To alter the course of the deficit, staff recognized that significant new streams would need to be added or cuts to services would need to be made. Ultimately, based on resident feedback gathered at community meetings and through scientific polling, staff implemented a plan to resolve the deficit on the revenue side. Revenue options implemented include a city sales tax, renegotiated solid waste hauling franchise fee, modified sports field use agreements, and moving closer to full cost recovery for community services programs like festivals. In early June, a town hall meeting was held with city council and the community to discuss the budget deficit as well as the options to resolve it. Later that month, the city council approved an increase in the franchise fees with the city's contracted waste hauler Burtec. This approval resulted in an additional two-point-two million dollars of revenue. Additionally, the city council approved to add a one percent sales tax measure to the November ballot. Measure S was projected to bring in an additional six million dollars in revenue each year. During the subsequent months leading up to November, the city embarked on an education campaign to ensure voters understood the decision before them. Ultimately, voters approved Measure S by over sixty percent. These revenue strategies combined with earlier cost-saving measures were instrumental towards sustaining city service levels and preventing cuts to public safety. But the work is not done. We are expecting to see sizable increases in the costs of our police and fire contracts as staffing requirements and schedules are changing and salary negotiations are taking place countywide. In other words, contractual costs for public safety services will rise even though we are not increasing the number of boots on the ground. For fiscal year two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six, which will begin July first, the city will deliver a balanced budget and will continue to explore innovative revenue solutions and cost-saving measures to ensure long-term fiscal stability and the preservation of essential services for the community. Goal number two, enhance public safety and reduce homelessness. The city has made significant strides in enhancing public safety through strategic investments, innovative, innovative initiatives, and collaborative partnerships. By prioritizing investing in equipment, providing comprehensive training programs for first responders, and funding specialized enforcement operations, the city has strengthened its ability to protect residents and address community concerns. Additionally, the implementation of targeted special projects aimed at risk mitigation has further bolstered, bolstered public safety and sharing a proactive approach to reducing potential hazards. On the policing side, we conducted twenty-four additional city-funded, solution-oriented policing or SOP team enforcement operations to address homelessness and quality of life issues. We conducted a very successful grant-funded operation consequences resulting in the collection of dozens of illegal firearms and a large number of arrests. The SOP team has made over seven-hundred-and-fifty contacts with, with homeless individuals and over three-hundred vacant property checks. We invested in nine additional license plate recognition cameras that integrate with national database, which provides real-time alerts on stolen vehicles, Amber alerts, et cetera. We added and or upgraded over twenty surveillance cameras at city facilities and parks. We conducted over nine enhanced traffic enforcement operations, which were grant-funded through the California Office of Traffic Safety. We conducted a full-scale active shooter response exercise at the high school for all surrounding law enforcement and fire personnel in partnership with the school district. We participated in three multi-agency mobile home park inspections. We funded and sent the entire SOP team to Human Trafficking Investigators School. We implemented body worn cameras for code enforcement officers to enhance transparency and accountability. I'd like to stop for a second and just reflect on the tremendous success of our homeless strategic plan and our SOP team. This plan was put into place, boots on the ground, in October of two thousand twenty-three. In January of two thousand twenty-four, when the countywide homeless point-in-time count was taken, just three months into the on-the-ground operations of that plan, the homeless, numbers of homeless individuals counted on the streets of Ucaipa had dropped by forty-one percent over the year prior. It had dropped from, I think it was twenty-three or so individuals down to thirteen. I'm not supposed to know the numbers of the point-in-time count that happened last week, but I can tell you that when those official numbers come out, they will be significantly lower than they were last year. The SOP team is a resounding success. Our homeless strategic plan is a resounding success, so much so that we are now regularly being contacted by other jurisdictions asking to come meet with us to talk about the success of our program. On the fire department side, we received a heavy-duty chipper for hazard fuel reduction projects using an inland empire resources conservation district grant. Ucaipa Fire Department held two community-wide chipping days and completed several hazardous fuel reduction projects. We partnered with the Red Cross to provide a hundred-and-six smoke detectors at Lakeview Mobile Home Park during the Sound the Alarm event. We replaced outdated body armor PPE and active shooter treatment kits for all fire department personnel. We replaced all Ucaipa Fire Department mobile and handheld radios, which had become obsolete and unreparable, to state and federal compliant radios. We expanded citywide AED program with the addition of new AEDs in the Ucaipa library. In July, the city entered into a revised automatic, automatic aid agreement with the city of Cal Mesa to include automatic, automatic aid responses for emergency medical and rescue incidents. The previous agreement only allowed for automatic aid during a structural or vegetation fire response. With the new agreement in place, residents in both cities benefit as it enables the closest available resource to respond to an emergency regardless of the city boundary. This new agreement is saving lives. In December of two thousand twenty-three, the San Bernardino County Board of Supervisors awarded the Ground Ambulance Service Contract to Consolidated Fire Agencies, known as CONFIRE. In a big win for Ucaipa residents, to reduce response times and ensure that ambulances are strategically positioned within the city, the city entered into a lease agreement with CONFIRE to lease the facility on Ucaipa Boulevard that once served as the Business Incubator Center. This is a temporary location as the city continues to work with CONFIRE to secure a permanent location here in Ucaipa. And speaking of CONFIRE, I think we all know that the award of the contract to CONFIRE is being challenged in court by the previous provider, AMR. I was asked to join the negotiation team to hopefully resolve this lawsuit. I was one of only two city managers throughout the county that were asked to be on this team, and negotiations are ongoing. In other city projects, we completed the replacement of the Dunlap Boulevard Bridge over Wilson Creek to complete the FEMA process to remove over four-hundred-and-fifty properties from the floodplain, resulting in a significant reduction to flood risk in the city. We adopted an updated, an update to the safety element of the general plan, which included additional policies for fire department access and protection, equipment funding, and evacuation route mapping. We completed emergency repair and debris removal work in our basins to correct damage caused by post Eldorado Fire debris flows during the tropical storm Hillary event. And that brings us to goal number three. Improve road maintenance and traffic congestion. The city has taken an aggressive approach to improve our network of roads within the city. This year, with the adoption of the fiscal year two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five Pavement Management Program, or PMP, the city committed a record four-point-one million dollars for street pavement rehabilitation and repairs. This is the largest PMP investment in the city's history. What's more, it cost the general fund nothing as it was made up entirely of restricted funding. During this last year, multiple contracts were awarded to complete a variety of street maintenance projects which improved the pavement condition of many different street segments within the city. In addition, the city has enhanced the public works pothole repair efforts by addressing an additional, by adding an additional full-time staff position and implementing new technology materials for pavement repairs. To ease traffic congestion and improve safety, several near-term and long-term actions have been taken. In January, new speed limits were established for certain streets after an engineering and traffic survey was completed. Several traffic signals received updates to their equipment to enhance the signal coordination along Ucaipa Boulevard and Oakland Road. In addition, capacity-enhancing transportation projects have been completed to improve traffic circulation along County Line Road and Avenue E. This included widening and intersection improvements along some of the city's busiest transportation corridors. Long-term, in newer specific plans, the city has amended roadway standards to encourage slower speeds and to reduce the square footage of roadways required to be maintained.
Mr. City Manager?
Yes, sir.
What was that amount that we spent on roads this year?
Four-point-one million dollars, sir.
So a few months ago, I received a phone call from a resident who was very upset about the potholes and said we need to spend more money. And when I asked this person how much we should spend in their mind to fix this, the response I was given was, at least, at least five-hundred-thousand dollars a year you should be spending on roads. We spent four-point-one million dollars on roadways.
Yes, sir.
We have a lot of roads in our city. So to anybody who's listening, we're spending money on our roads. We just have a lot of them. And a lot of our roads, as we learned last year, were originally put in by the county of San Bernardino prior to our incorporation. So we're working through a lot of antiquated roadways and we're dealing with them on azneed bases versus just repaving the entire city as it was suggested a few months ago to me by this concerned citizen. So I just wanted to bring a little emphasis to that.
I appreciate that. Yeah, no, you know, we have, we're now up to two-hundred-and-nine miles of public roads in the city. That's a lot of miles for the number of residents we have, and it's because we do have more rural areas. So we're more spread out than a lot of cities with, with similar populations. So I mean, the more spread out you are, the more roads you tend to have, right? So it is a challenge maintaining two-hundred-and-nine miles of, of public roads. And, you know, this, this council, when, when you set the budget last year, decided to prioritize road maintenance and to focus on maintaining what we have versus, you know, we still built new projects, but we reduced that and focused, focused restricted revenue on, on maintenance of, of existing roads. Okay. Goal four, expand communications, public engagement, and transparency efforts. The city has considerably expanded its communications, public engagement, and transparency efforts to strengthen the connections with the community and ensure residents are informed and involved. On the public engagement side, the city has held approximately fifteen town hall-style meetings and community presentations on various topics, including the One Country Specific Plan, the budget deficit, Measure S, and with recently appointed Councilman Bob Miller. Earlier in the year, city council and residents were given a tour of the city streets to view various street conditions and to learn how streets are prioritized in the PMP. A pop-up booth at Winterfest was operated by our community development team to engage residents and gather feedback on upcoming planning initiatives. Led by the city clerk's office, staff hosted over fifty students from Competitive Edge Charter Academy to meet the mayor, learn about the basics of city governance, share their vision with the city planning department, and touch a truck with the Ucaipa Fire Department. The city is modernizing its communications by reaching residents where they receive information and in the ways they digest information today. This has necessitated a shift toward video and graphic content. In August, the city launched the Ucaipa Three-Sixty Podcast to offer a media format that facilitates in-depth discussions about city issues and news. The podcast also offers additional content generation opportunities to build engagement on social media channels. Since the first episode dropped in September of last year, ten episodes have been released, which have over six-thousand-one-hundred views on YouTube and six-hundred-and-fifty downloads on podcast streaming platforms. Throughout the year, several special meetings have been held with city staff in which the city council was provided with an overview of the functions and operations for each city department. In addition, several video productions have been created and released. These include the Walk with the Mayor series, which provided updates and answered the why on topics such as saturation patrols, the Ucaipa Boulevard on-ramp, and Wildwood Canyon Road Safety Enhancement. The Ucaipa at a Crossroads video, which delved into the city's finances and other issues. The Ucaipa Homeless Strategic Plan, a success story video, which discussed the successes and positive impacts of the Homeless Strategic Plan. The Line Fire Update by Chief Malinowski. The Let's Talk Trash video, in which I explained the franchise fee issue and the changes in the contract with Burtec. And video tutorials to assist residents with navigating the city's new permitting software system. During initial community discussions on the budget deficit, the city released the Financial Fixer Tool as a means of engaging the community and soliciting feedback on preferred options to generate revenues or cut services. Starting in fiscal year twenty-five, the city implemented an online budget book, which offers an accessible way for residents to review financial information. The city also developed and implemented the Community Feedback and Complaint Form as well as the city's response processes. These forms are available to the public at City Hall and are also on the website.
Mr. City Manager?
Yes.
I want to compliment the city on the Ucaipa Three-Sixty videos. As a new member of the council and realizing I have a lot to learn, those videos have been so helpful, mainly because I can go back and back and back and make, take notes and things like that. I do highly recommend them to everybody. I do highly recommend them to everybody that I talk to. And some people have said, oh, I didn't know that. And some people say, I'll watch it. So hopefully more people will start watching it.
Thank you. Yeah, we appreciate that. That takes us to goal five. Increase revenue generation to offset costs of community services and development services functions. Move toward full cost recovery for festivals and user fees. We'll start with community services. The Community Services Department has made significant progress in developing creative ways to generate revenue to offset costs of services. From a budgetary basis, department-wide, the emphasis on cost recovery increased from fifty-five percent in fiscal year twenty-four to seventy-eight percent in fiscal year twenty-five. If we went back even further to fiscal year twenty-three, you would see that number in the mid-thirties. So we've made significant progress over the last three years. Two years, really. This increased focus has garnered positive results. Most notably, the Stars After School program has achieved one hundred percent cost recovery through the Extended Learning Opportunities, or ELOP, grant program partnership with the school district. And for the first time ever, Autumn Fest achieved one hundred percent cost recovery and even generated twenty-five thousand dollars in net positive revenues for the city. Throughout the year, each segment of the Community Services Department has taken steps to move towards increased cost recovery. Examples of actions taken include: In aquatics, to promote facility rentals and swim lessons at the Seventh Street Pool, staff has developed targeted marketing campaigns focused on local schools, community groups, and childcare providers. Staff has collaborated with local swim teams, water polo teams, and schools to promote benefits and encourage participation. In addition, more classes were offered during the summer session, season. With camps, to offset costs, the city partnered with the school district to utilize ELOP grant funding to cover registration costs for income-qualified students. To boost enrollment, camps began offering early drop-off and late pickup options and have introduced flexible day registration. Additionally, staff participation ratios were evaluated and adjusted. A monthly Parents Night Out program was introduced, and freeway electric billboards were used for promotion. The community center. Classes, class offerings were expanded with new options including volleyball, jazz and ballet dance, CPR, and a princess tea party. The frequency of the parking lot sales events was increased. In addition, the community center hosted an open house to showcase department activities. Facility rentals were boosted by increasing gym reservations for tournaments and events. Advertisement for these rentals were promoted through QR codes installed on park signage and via social media. Senior services. At the senior center, new programming options such as trivia, painting sessions, and hula were introduced to diversify offerings and increase revenue. In addition, the city has entered into a rental agreement for a local church to use the facility during off-hours to generate rental income. To reduce costs, staffing levels were optimized, supplies were purchased in bulk, and local agency partnerships were pursued for sponsorships. Special events. To increase revenues, VIP stadium seating was offered at the Fourth of July event, and tiered pricing structures were implemented for five K runs. At both Autumn Fest and Winter Fest, the number of jumpers were expanded and prices were adjusted for premier seating areas and fire pit rounds. The city also renegotiated revenue share agreements with alcohol vendors, and we now have taken over the sale of alcohol at city events. The Stars After School program, again, in partnership with the school district, the city was able to utilize ELOP funding to cover key program expenses, including supplies and staffing. To increase revenues, program fees were assessed and increased. To offset costs, staff identified mini-grant opportunities through San Bernardino County to secure funding for middle school site activities and supplies. To increase program enrollment, staff collaborated with the school district to increase awareness and drive participation at Ucaipa schools. Youth sports. Last year, city staff developed and launched a new approach to facility use agreements. This approach modified the facility use agreement fee structure from a per-player fee to an hourly usage fee for each field or court. This changed better lines with operational costs and maximizes facility availability. Moreover, this change aims to increase revenues, helping to offset the rising costs of maintenance while creating a more equitable system for all user groups. By implementing an hourly fee, the city has encouraged user groups to be more efficient in their scheduling, resulting in greater availability of facilities for a wider range of users. There is a Ucaipa three sixty episode dropping tomorrow morning that focuses on this very issue. So if this is an issue that's important to you, and I know it is to many people in the community, we'll have a deep dive on that coming out tomorrow. Looking forward, the city will be offering two new programs in the spring of two thousand twenty-five. The Adaptive All-Star Athlete Program will give participants the chance to explore various sports in a fun and supportive environment. In addition, a new weekend Pee-wee multi-sport program will be launched. The Y-PAC. To increase the profitability and attendance at events, new partnerships were established to bring in quality acts resulting in more shows being sold out. A tiered ticketing model was implemented to match pricing with demand. Concessions were expanded, and meet-and-greet packages were offered. The city also negotiated revenue share agreements with alcohol vendors to increase cost recovery at each event. In addition, staff has also worked hard to increase rentals. The Y-PAC is rented to private parties for events such as weddings, birthday parties, retirement parties, et cetera. Lastly, staff has been actively recruiting volunteers to join the Y-PAC Volunteer Program, which helps during various events and productions. Last year, three volunteers were added to the program. Now let's switch over to development services. In development services, the deposit-based fee structure was replaced with an upfront set fee structure, which has improved cost recovery for development projects. In addition, development code updates and land use designation efforts prioritize creating a higher taxable value per acre for future land development projects. Citywide, the Finance Department has engaged the Services of Will Dan to perform a comprehensive user fee study and to update the cost allocation plan. Both of these items have an estimated completion date prior to the end of this fiscal year. This takes us to goal six. Focus on completion of current projects divides long-range CIP strategic plan. Last year, the city completed nine capital improvement, or CIP, projects, which included public improvements at multiple city parks, facilities, and also the transportation network by improving ADA access from residential areas to businesses along Ucaipa Boulevard. The Development Services Department reviewed a total of forty-eight projects in the previous year's CIP and prioritized thirty-two of those projects for delivery and construction. The remaining sixteen were deprioritized and were not included in this year's CIP. For projects that were prioritized, a CIP budget analysis was completed to confirm budgeting funding, budgeted funding, expenditures to date, and to identify additional available funding. In addition, cost estimates were revised based on current industry costs and projects that require additional funding were identified. Furthermore, project fact sheets describing the project benefits and additional funding needed were developed to assist in seeking grant funding. Goal seven. Seek economic development while preserving Ucaipa's unique rural feel. The Planning Department has initiated a comprehensive update to the city's development code. The current development code was carried over from the county of San Bernardino when the city incorporated nineteen eighty-nine. Since then, a patchwork of updates has taken place to create Ucaipa-specific requirements. The resulting document is broad, as county code was designed to provide guidance for many communities, vague, not well-organized, and in some instances, difficult to understand. The goal of this comprehensive update is to make the development code more user-friendly, clear and consistent, and specific to the city of Ucaipa. The update will establish standards that are measurable, objective, and specific to the city. For example, there are existing residential design standards that require the new development to be compatible to the neighborhood. This vague description can lead to different interpretations. The updated code will replace ambiguous language with specific measurable standards. The update will also incorporate visual references to explain complex legalese and to convey key points. Ultimately, the update will establish clear expectations for future developments to ensure that high-quality design and layouts occur. While a lot of work has gone into laying the groundwork for this update over the past year, it is expected that the update will be accomplished over the next year and a half. It's quite a process. Last year, planning staff worked to ensure that proposed projects incorporated thoughtful designs, community amenities, open areas, and architectural styles that complement the city's natural landscape. Examples included the Ucaipa Gateway Project and the Starling Heights specific plan. The city remains committed to encouraging economic growth while preserving the scenic beauty and small-town character that make Ucaipa special. Goal eight. Continue updating the municipal code. Throughout the year, several updates to the city's municipal code were approved. Ordinance four thirty-nine, updating development code related to temporary signs to comply with changes in the law. Ordinance four forty pertaining to campaign contribution limits. Ordinance four forty-four, establishing regulations for sidewalk vendors and food trucks. Ordinance four forty-five, amending the municipal code related to bingo. Ordinance four forty-seven, modifying regulations pertaining to development impact fees. Ordinance four forty-nine, amending the official land use plan and zoning ordinance related to the Starling Heights development. Ordinance four fifty-one, prohibiting camping and storage of personal property in public spaces. Ordinance four sixty-six U, adopted an emergency ordinance to establish a temporary moratorium for the installation of mobile homes greater than twenty years old. That moratorium has since expired. In October, the city attorney presented the city council with a comprehensive update to the municipal code, which sought to enhance clarity, enforcement, and administrative procedures, ensuring the code reflects modern best practices and community needs. This ambitious project was a collaborative effort led by the city attorney's office, with significant contributions from all departments. Over the course of nearly a year, the team conducted thorough reviews, identified outdated or unclear provisions, and streamlined processes to improve usability for both staff and residents. The updated code not only simplifies enforcement and administration, but also provides a clearer framework for governance and decision-making. This monumental effort demonstrates the city's dedication to fostering transparency, efficiency, and accessibility in its operations. Goal nine. Establish Five Winds Ranch Eldorado Park Master Plan. The city has entered into a professional services contract with a consultant, SWA, to assist with the preparation of a master plan. Due to the nature of the research and the time required to prepare a master plan for this type of facility, staff worked with SWA to complete this effort in phases, beginning with a feasibility and programming study, Phase One. Phase One established an understanding of the types of revenue generating programs and activities that would be successful at this type of facility. Phase One required staff and SWA to go through the summer and fall season and also to experience and study the Five Winds Country Music Festival at the facility, held in October of last year, to help obtain needed data. Phase One has been completed, and Phase Two was initiated in November of last year with an anticipated completion date of March of this year. Phase Two will complete the draft master plan for city council consideration in March or April of this year. Goal ten. Bolster risk management by providing safety trainings, safety inspections, and requiring proper certifications. Risk management has been enhanced through the implementation of safety trainings, comprehensive safety inspections, and certification requirements. Training. All city staff received training on CPR, Stop the Bleed, Narcan Administration, Workplace Violence Prevention, and Active Shooter Response. Several public work staff attended BackSafe training hosted by CERA to reinforce proper lifting techniques in order to mitigate potential lifting injuries. Public work staff attended trainings and seminars on traffic control on public roadways and herbicide and pesticide application. All community services full-time staff and Stars' part-time staff were trained on the proper handling, reporting, and documentation of incidents. All code enforcement staff have received training in bloodborne pathogen exposure risk. Both code enforcement and park ranger teams received OC or pepper spray and taser training. Management and supervisory staff received HR and personnel-related trainings to reduce employer liability risk. A citywide risk assessment was conducted by the California Intergovernmental Risk Authority, or CERA, and the city received overall positive remarks. As part of the Safety Committee's semi-annual inspections, all playground equipment were inspected, and a safety inspection of all Five Winds Ranch Eldorado Park was conducted. All public work staff were certified or re-certified in flagger operations and traffic control. Which brings us to goal eleven. Enhance taxpayer-friendly approach. The city has enhanced its taxpayer-friendly approach by implementing practical measures that reduce burdens and improve accessibility for residents and businesses. In June, the city launched the new EPNL Online Permitting Program, which allows residents to apply for permits, schedule inspections, make payments, and track their project all from the comfort of their home. The new system has improved efficiency and convenience as it is available twenty-four seven. Feedback from residents has been overwhelmingly positive. This project was a massive undertaking by city staff encompassing a year and a half of planning, customization, and training before it was ready to be released. During the same month, city council reviewed and awarded twenty thousand, twenty thousand dollars in financial support and approximately forty thousand in in-kind fee waiver requests for seventeen various community groups under the Community Activity Grant Program. This program supports the efforts of local nonprofits, agencies, and organizations that provide valuable services, programs, and events to Ucaipa residents. In August, the city council approved the renewal of a memorandum of understanding with the University Enterprise Corporation, or UEC, at California State University San Bernardino on behalf of the Inland Empire Small Business Development Center to provide small businesses consulting and support services. The IES BDC assists participants with developing business plans, setting strategic goals, and creating budget projections. The renewed MOU requires nine workshop or webinars to be held in the community meeting room at City Hall. It's important to note that all services are free and available to all Ucaipa businesses. In November, the Code Enforcement Division transitioned from the Development Services Department to the Public Safety Department, led by Public Safety Manager Trevor Benson. With this change, the focus of code enforcement operations has been adjusted to prioritize a more resident and business-friendly approach. For example, code enforcement must now exhaust all efforts to gain compliance with the municipal code violation before a citation is issued. These efforts focus on outreach and contacting the owner or individual, educating that person on what the issue is, and providing a timeline for compliance. In addition, a code enforcement policy manual has been developed and will come to the city council for approval at an upcoming meeting. This manual is a tool to assist in setting expectations for the team, such as report-writing standards and establishing enforcement boundaries. The last significant change to enhance the taxpayer-friendly approach with code enforcement has been to rotate officer territories and revise schedules to ensure consistent cover and the ability to be responsive to community needs. At City Hall, across the board, business license requirements have been eliminated. Now only select vendors and businesses are required to obtain a city business license. Lastly, the adoption of Ordinance four thirty-nine related to temporary signage has created easier provisions for real estate, open-house signs, and yard sale signs. In addition to the eleven goals that were set, I'd like to point out just a few other significant achievements over the past year. The first is in relation to the library project. And whether or not that project ends up ultimately being approved, I do think it's worth pointing out the tremendous lift on the staff side to get us where we are today, and a lot of that happened over the past year. Staff made significant progress towards delivering the project. Project aims to construct a fifteen-to-eighteen-thousand-square-foot library facility on a vacant lot just east of and adjacent to the high school. In January of last year, city staff secured the nine million in grant match funding, which was a requirement of the California State Library's grant award. Funding for the nine-million-dollar match requirement was provided by Supervisor County Don Rao, who committed a million dollars. The San Manuel Band of Mission Indians, who committed a million dollars. The County Administrative Office, which committed four million dollars. And we paired that with the three million that had been set aside here in our capital improvement program for the city of Ucaipa. And we continued our partnership with the school district for the use of district property for the project site. In November of last year, the city council received an update and approved the library project and use agreement between the city, the school district, and the county. This agreement outlined each partner's contributions and responsibilities for the project. This agreement in and of itself was a pretty big lift to get all of those parties on the same page. On Thursday, January sixteenth of this year, ten responses to an RFQ were received and are in the evaluation process. The city council will be presented with an item to potentially award a contract next month. Improving relationships regionally was another big accomplishment over the past year. The city has made strides over the past year in fostering and improving regional relationships. I and the department heads have taken part in quarterly joint collaboration meetings with the City of Calmesa, the Water District, the School District, the Community College. At a recent meeting, many in attendance commented that our regional relationships have never been stronger. In addition, positive relationships have been fostered and maintained with the county, with our state and federal representatives, and with San Manuel Band of Mission Indians. Last year, we also redid our Personnel Policies and Procedures Manual. The city's Personnel Rules, Policies, and Practices were originally created in nineteen ninety-four and had received periodic updates over the years. Historically, as updates were completed, these documents existed separately and were not compiled into a comprehensive manual. Earlier this year, the Human Resources Department, in conjunction with myself and the city attorney, worked on reviewing, updating, and consolidating these rules, policies, and practices. worked on reviewing, updating, and consolidating these rules, policies, and practices into a single document titled Personnel Policies and Procedures Manual. This document was formally adopted by the city council in May of last year. It was a busy year. And again, I apologize for the length of that presentation, but I do think it's important to pause once a year and reflect back on, really, all of the work we're doing. I think it would surprise a lot of our residents to understand all of the work that goes on an ongoing basis here with a relatively small staff. It surprises us when we take the time to compile it, and we look back and we realize, my gosh, yeah, that, we did do a lot this past year. But that brings us to setting goals for this year. In thinking about what is important this year, we really believe that this has to be a year of planning. I'm not going to say rebuilding, maybe a little bit of restructuring. But as we work out of our structural budget deficit, I think, you know, the one primary thing that we have to do this year is we have to deliver a balanced budget, and we're going to put that up as goal number one. But I think it's also going to be a year of putting together long-range planning, right? That's very important. We work our way out of this deficit. How do we make sure that we don't get back there again, right? A budget is really a set of priorities for a community, right? So how do we know where we're going? We don't want to be changing priorities every two years, every four years. You know, we need a plan in place, a vision that we're all on the same page with and working towards as time goes on. So with that, we decided, you know, last year we had eleven goals. We're recommending to the council that this year we focus on five. Let's get back to the basics here, and for a year, pause a little bit and do some planning, right? But, goal number one, deliver a balanced budget. We need to do that. The voters passed Measure S in November, and I think their expectation of us now is that we're going to do our part and deliver a balanced budget, and a budget that does not contain cuts to public safety. So this is going to be a monumental task this year. You know, I told staff when Measure S passed, in a way, it would have been a little easier if it had failed, because then our direction's pretty clear. We just have to do across-the-board cuts. Everything gets slashed, right? Now Measure S has passed, and it's great. It's, you know, the estimate is six million dollars in revenue. When you pair that up with the changes to our contract with BRTech, you know, we're at eight point two million dollars, which is great. Our deficit this fiscal year was seven point three, but we know the costs go up every year. We were anticipating significant increases in the cost of our police and fire contracts next year. So we're going to have to work hard to make sure that we deliver a balanced budget this year, and then, once we do that, we have to start some planning. So let's go to number two. Establish your strategic plan. Let's all get on the same page for what it is we want to do as a city. Let's put a plan together and make sure that we're all marching in that same direction. And tied to that, number three, establish a long-term financial plan, right? What's our plan going to be to execute that strategic plan? What's our plan going to be to stay out of deficit, right? We know costs are going to keep going up, and for a while, they're probably going to keep going up at a faster pace than our revenues are increasing. So how do we make sure that, once we balance the budget, once we achieve number one, that we stay balanced, right? And then, number four. This point was driven home clearly recently with the power outages. And in my short two-year stint here, I've already had to declare one local emergency with Tropical Storm Hillary. And while I was incredibly impressed with the response of our public safety manager, our fire chief, police captain, all of our personnel, police and fire personnel, and with the coordination with surrounding agencies, I do believe that this is an area that we really need to focus in on. We are not where we should be when it comes to emergency preparedness and our emergency management capabilities. So I think this really needs to, even though, you know, on the one hand, we're tightening our belt and we're saying we got to balance the budget, we are going to have to invest here. We know we live in a region that is susceptible to earthquakes and to fire, and because of that, to debris flow and flooding, and we have to be better prepared. And finally, number five, continue to enhance transparency and communication capabilities. We know that we've gone through a period of time where there's been a bit of a rift in the community. And I think that most local government agencies could frankly do a better job than they're doing with communications and with being transparent. But I think it's especially important for us now, as we look to move forward, we need to be doing everything we can to be transparent and to communicate, and we are in a new age now. People do not receive information the way they used to. We have to be better at, in this digital world of creating videos and graphics and social media and all of that, reaching people where they receive and digest information today. So that's an area where we're going to need to invest and expand as well. These five goals, again, are taken from conversations I've had with members of the city council, they're taken from conversations I've had with staff in each department, but they are recommendations to you. These are, you know, when adopted, will be the city council's goals and your direction to staff. The primary thing we look at through the year to say, what should we be doing? What should we be spending our time on? And these goals will inform, to a very large degree, the draft budget that we bring to you in May. So with that, I would welcome any feedback or any ideas, any potential changes you'd like to see here, and eventually, a vote to adopt the goals.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. I think you've hit a nail on the head here, but let me turn it over to my fellow council members and see what their input is, starting at my right here. Councilman Beaver.
So we'll start from the beginning. To all city staff, which, there's eighteen people in the room, and two of them are not city staff. Feels like we're in twenty twenty-two again. Thank you for your very hard work. This year is, or let me rephrase, twenty twenty-four flew by, and you accomplished a lot. And Mr. City Manager, you were brought into this government under the impression that you were landing in a place that had a vast surplus of money? That was not the case. So it's even more impressive that we actually accomplished all these goals with no money. And you delivered. So to that end, outstanding work for your leadership, but also Jennifer, for me, Ben, Landon, Phil, Trevor, everybody, all city staff, you guys stepped up to the plate, you tightened the belt, you worked smarter, not harder. You got the job done. So as it relates to the twenty twenty-four goals, outstanding work. I expected nothing less. Our citizens demand that kind of level of service, and they're damn lucky to have such committed employees that work in the city. I know our public works often doesn't attend these meetings, but when you talk about Hillary, man, what a bunch of rock stars those guys were. While the rest of us were truly sheltering in place and preparing for a horrible storm, you had Scott and his team out there enduring the elements and moving things around. So twenty twenty-four, you did it. You achieved the goals. I think I would have liked to see a little bit more on the economic development side of things, but I recognize that the development code was antiquated and needed help. So I'm glad that we're tackling that objective. Truly, Ryan and his team are, I mean, I can't say enough of good things about our team here, but we have to find a way not to just attract new business, but I look over here at our president and CEO of Sword and Swine's Acres, we got to find a way to not just attract new business, but let's take Sword and Swine and other business to the next level, and really capitalize on that two percent sales tax that we achieved by making sure that her sales go through the roof. And maybe she finds it in a bigger storefront, that brick-and-mortar retail goes through the roof, so we can capitalize that too, that, excuse me, that one percent sales tax. I'd like to see that continue, even without it being a goal. And I think that's very doable here. I think Ryan and his team, under your leadership, know that their job doesn't change just because it isn't an emphasized goal of the council. If this was a long-drawn-out, eleven-step goal, my first motion would have been to defer this vote until our deputy mayor can be here to render an opinion. But these are not outlandish goals that I think anybody would object to. I don't feel odd about pushing this forward without our deputy mayor, because it's not convoluted. It's not that, you know, seven thousand-page budget being sent to Congress expecting us to just flip through and read it, right? You were doing, you were following the Trump model and giving us five easily attainable objectives that we need to try to push towards, or goals, rather. The balanced budget has to be paramount. We've been entrusted with extra funds by our taxpayers, and I think it's incumbent on us to ensure that that is our priority goal, so I'm glad that's number one. I'm excited to see our citizen oversight committee relative to the tax measure be formed and allow them the opportunity to review our expenditures when the time comes. I think that'll be part of that number one budget, or number one goal. I think you're absolutely right. We've done too long for the last twenty years or more of doing without really taking a step back to turn on the high beams and look ahead of where we're going to be when this is all done. Your predecessor wasn't able to give me a five- and ten- and twenty-year plan for the city, and number two is a method for you to do that, to deliver a twenty-year plan. When we are no longer here, where's Ukepa going to be? And it's incumbent on us, the five of us, the four of us now, to establish a plan so that we can know in twenty years where the city should be if things are followed, and obviously, absent things changing. Number three follows that to a T, I believe. Our city hall shouldn't have been dark just because Edison over-exaggerated some wind speeds in our area. Our government can't stop functioning, and obviously, our emergency services were fully capable, but the fact of the matter is, we would have had to set up shop in our police department or somewhere with a generator, because our city manager, who's our emergency or disaster preparedness or emergency manager, or emergency director, rather, was unable to sign and then disseminate a disaster declaration because he didn't have any power in his office. It's unacceptable. This building needs to stand, even when things are falling apart, so our government can be providing those services that our citizens need. And absolutely, the transparency we've started on this last couple of years has to continue. And communication is critical to that. We can't be transparent unless we're talking, even if we're losing our voice from the dais. Again, I was fully intending, when our city manager began laying out this process, to request a deferral of this item until our deputy mayor can be here. But given that these are the truly down, just back to the basics of government, I don't see any fluff here. I don't see any, let's talk about, you know, extra parks and extra things. This is, let's get down to business. I can support this, even without Chris, who's, the man is engaged. He's a very engaged councilman. But I'm not going to hold up these goals. I think our city staff need direction, they need to get to work, not to jam it already. And I don't think we should hold it up. I think we can push forward with this. So I know there's going to probably be more comments, but just know my motion will be on the table, ready for the second, whenever you're ready for it.
Thank you, sir.
Councilman Miller?
I agree with Mr. Beaver. These are all very important goals, especially the financial part. That's basically why I ran, because I felt that, you know, we really needed, not that I'm an expert by any means, but it's something that really does need to be addressed. And definitely, the emergency preparedness, we were shown that. And I agree, a generator or something here at the building would have been definitely helpful to the staff and for us also. So I do agree. I think these are all very reasonable and reachable goals, and looking forward to help accomplish them.
Thank you.
Yeah, I want to obviously agree with the sentiments heard by council, and, you know, everything about goals is measurable. What are the data points, and do you measure them? You know, we had a lot of goals there last year, and they were measured, and they were completed. They were completed with good work from the city manager and the staff. Clearly, the goals are met and exceeded in some places, you know, whether it was projects or collaboration or innovative new ways to communicate, it's done. So we're moving on to bigger and better things. I love that we have five significant things to work on for the next year, and it all centers around establishing a strategic plan, with number three, establishing a long-term financial plan. All the other things that we're going to do are going to fold into them two areas. And if we do it right, we will have a vision for the city for the next, you know, five, ten, fifteen years out, that we can all work around, and especially around the financial plan. It's critical in this time and day, in era that we're in, that there's trust that we're managing the community, this tax money correctly and efficiently and openly. But if you have the plan that's based off your strategic plan, it's the check and balance. This is what we're going to do, this is how we're going to do it, and here's the data points of how it's going to look. I know you're going to, the staff and you will deliver a balanced budget. I would be shocked if we didn't, you know, short of some emergency or something, but we've all talked about the emergency preparedness and the management capabilities. We have to have business continuity when things happen. This was a nice little precursor of when the power goes out, what happens in your community, and there was a lot of dialogue over that, clearly, but that's why we're in the business, to help our community. So we always have lessons learned out of things that happen, and this made us, you know, maybe explore that a little bit. How do we engage our citizen volunteers? How we grow our SERD teams? How we do the things to engage our communities to help us when things happen? And then, definitely exploring some possibilities to get some sort of generator to keep business open here at City Hall, because people are still needing things done, and we still have to be to operate. I know the staff, they were here working, even in the dark, but I thought that was a good thing. And then transparency is just telling the truth, just letting people know what we're doing and getting it out there and being honest with them. And communication, yes, there's a lot of different ways to communicate now, but I think if we can just keep things simple, it's not really simple, it's going to be complicated when we get the strategic plan, but five things that we can do very well, and just really focus and do them extremely well. If we can do that, we can bring the city where, as a team, we can bring the city of what our community expects. And then, our community will know that we're working on them five things, and we want to embrace them, and every meeting we go to, this is what we're working on, this is what we're trying to get to, and that's the North Star. Here's where we're trying to go. But it really starts with a strategic plan. I think we'll figure that piece out of how we're going to do that, where we bring somebody in, develop the plan. We've been and had them things done before. It depends on who you're going to use, but that's number one. And then, that long-term financial plan, I'll probably talk about it several times over the next few months, it's key to everything. You know, I think these are wonderful. Five good things we can work on as a team and focus our community and move forward. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I agree with all the comments that have been made by my colleagues. I like what we accomplished last year, and I like what we're going on the board here moving forward for this next year and beyond. I don't think I have anything else to add, they've all hit it. So we have a motion on the floor that Councilman Beaver would like to accept these five items as presented. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
We have a first and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. That brings us to council member reports. I'll kick it off, and then I'll send it out to my colleagues here. I have to kind of piggyback off what Justin said earlier, and I got to get better about it. Staff, you all did a great job, and I know there's a lot of staff that's not here tonight, but everyone does a great job. It's a great staff that we have from top position all the way down, so we appreciate all of you. And I appreciate this council up here, I think we have a good council, and looking forward to the things that we can do this year. One little highlight that I would like to highlight about our city, and maybe I'm a little biased to it. Performing Arts Center has a group that comes in, Legendary Productions, opened up this past weekend, Freaky Friday. It's a Disney play, but it's also done as a musical. Last I checked, there were seats still available for some of these upcoming shows next weekend. It's only, it closes next Sunday, I believe, so there's a few shows left. So there's a few shows left. For those that are listening, I encourage you to come watch plays or concerts at our facilities. They're all great. They do a great job. So with that, any other comments from our council members? Councilman Woolsey, no? Councilman Miller?
Yeah, I just, I didn't know what to expect going to Freaky Friday. It was a great, the Y-Pac's a great venue. The mayor's daughter had a great part in it, and it was a great evening. The Legendarys, is that the name of them? I encourage our community to go see the plays there. Seen a couple of plays now. I saw Johnny Cash, the rendition of Johnny was excellent. The play was wonderful. It's a nice evening. We got a beautiful facility. There's places you can go eat and have something to eat before you go. That's the community stuff we should do. So support the community and support the arts, as they say. The facility's beautiful, was really comfortable, and the mayor's daughter did a wonderful job in the play. She can sing, so I wanted to thank you for that, that we got to go. That was fun. So thank you.
Councilman Beaver?
Really briefly. Today, January 27th, sorry, my notes up. January 27th is recognized as International Holocaust Remembrance Day. 2025 is particularly important as this is the 80-year anniversary since the end of the Second World War and the Holocaust. The Holocaust stands as a harrowing reminder of what happens when hatred, dehumanization, and apathy prevail. Remembering the Holocaust safeguards the voices and memories of survivors, their vibrant communities, cherished traditions, hopes, dreams, and the loved ones who did not survive. Preserving this history not only honors the dignity of those whom the Nazis and their collaborators sought to destroy, but also serves as a powerful victory against hatred. Holocaust distortion and denial, by remembering, we confront those who seek to perpetuate the legacy of hatred in the 21st century. I didn't get this to the city staff in time, but if there's a way we can prepare some type of resolution or something from the city of Ucaipa, recognizing the end of the Second World War this year, obviously, today is the date of the Holocaust Remembrance Day, but given the temperature of our globe relative to antisemitism taking place here at home, it's almost as if people who don't study history are doomed to repeat it, and it's terrifying indeed to think that my daughter will grow up in a world where antisemitism might run rampant once again. So I would ask that city staff, please bring back something so that the council can vote on maybe having some type of resolution or proclamation recognizing January 27th as Holocaust Remembrance Day. Please. Nothing further, sir.
In light of that, do you need anything else from us on that? No? Okay. Moving on to announcements, Mr. City Manager, you have any announcements?
Nothing else to add tonight, sir. Thank you.
Okay. Our next regularly scheduled city council meeting will be February 10th and here at 6:00. That adjourns our normal meeting. We will now move into closed session. Current time is 8:15, 8:14, sorry.